There are no minutes. It was a lengthy prior meeting, as you recall.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't quite have the chance to finish them up.
Okay. So being seven o'clock, I call this Board of Appeals meeting to order. First item on the agenda is a continuation from McDonald's 151 Littleton Road. Jeff has a couple of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you may recall, well, first of all, the applicant did request to withdraw this variance petition without prejudice from the zoning board. So that is the request that is before you tonight. As you may recall, since the public hearing has been already advertised and the board opened the hearing, it takes a vote of this board in order to grant such a request. And it takes a majority vote to do so.
So we need a motion to close the hearing first?
May?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And per the applicant's request, we need a motion to withdraw their petition without prejudice.
So moved.
Second. Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott?
F?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will also vote in affirmative.
Thank you.
No drive-throughs.
So far.
So far. Next on the agenda is Dirkie Lane Avalon Solar Project. Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. Dennis Murray with Time Bond on behalf of Revision Energy in Avalon Bay. We just wanted to give the board a quick, brief update. We provided some response to comments that the Board, Board of Health, and I believe Citizen asked from the previous hearing. We are still waiting on formal written approval from DEP, so I didn't want to continue this out too long. But I was just wanted to give you a brief update. I was wondering if you had any questions on our response to comments. It's a fairly lengthy packet of calculations. And that's kind of where we are right now.
Anybody from the board have any questions about this project? I think, you know, we're kind of like you. We're waiting for the state to come in and say yes or no. Based on that, then we'll either see you again to say, okay, this is what we're going to do, or try something different. I do have one question, I guess. When you build those baskets, let's call them, that hold the panels, I assume you put the basket in place, then fill it?
Yep.
And so those, that field is going to be fine with you driving the machine over it?
Yeah. We've done the engineering to ensure that we're not going to exceed any pound per square foot for our ballast.
Yep. So I'll...
Well, I'm talking about the machine that's going to fill the basket.
All the equipment on the field will be low ground pressure, so below a seven PSI ground pressure rating. So as that weight gets dispersed over the soil, it is less than actually the ballast themselves. So the fully loaded machine, that is a requirement that we would expect to see for DEP, that the applicant submits. Calculations show equipment, so it'll be like a CAT 360 skid steer, fully loaded. And they do typically request that information. And they could, may, go out and spot check to make sure that the equivalent or equal piece of equipment is onsite being used.
Okay.
I just said, well, I did go out there and take a look at the, excuse me, take a look at the location. Couple of houses, a pretty close proximity. I think there's two. In communication with those people, is there any mitigation to those folks? Or are they...
Yeah, they're...
On board?
Yep. We've talked to them a couple of times. They're thrilled. Really excited to see this space be used for the solar. And then, as we mentioned, I think at the last meeting, we were proposing galvanized chain link fence. They requested the black vinyl, and so we're making that adjustment.
Okay.
More aesthetically pleasing.
I read too, it sounds like you're dealing with EverSource then, not National Grid?
That's National Grid out there.
In the documents, EverSource for some reason.
EverSource brings the feeder in, and then it's right on the line. EverSource is enacting, and National Grid is in...
Westford, Westford. That's what I'm saying. So your customers are in EverSource's territory, though, right?
Nope. The leach field is metered by National Grid.
All right, all right.
So that meter and that account is National Grid, even though the line coming in is owned and operated by EverSource, so.
Okay. So it looks like we're going to continue this to the September meeting?
September sixteenth.
Eighteenth?
Sixteenth. It's a Thursday. It's unusual.
Thursday?
It is.
Okay.
Now, I didn't know, also, I assume you're going to open this up to the public before you continued. And then I didn't know if any board members had gone out to do a site visit, if you feel as though the questions you raised last meeting were adequately addressed, or if you have something new, it would be helpful if the applicant heard that. So when they do come back with their correspondence from DEP, maybe it'd be a simpler process there at the end. If there's any other concerns you have.
I did go out and looked at it actually today, and I, my issue I had was with those houses that were there. I wasn't sure how that would play out. Sounds like that's sad story, even though you took their ball fields away from them, probably if they had kids.
Have you placed them on leach fields that size before?
We have not designed a system on leach fields of that size. I've done personally in Massachusetts about 60 projects on landfills of much larger size.
Big difference.
I would argue that the ground pressure and the geotechnical calculations are similar. The, usually the cap on a landfill is about a foot to 18 inches thick. The minimum cover on this leach field is two and a half feet, at the worst case scenario. As you get down in different areas, the cover increases over the pipes. So the pipe crushing calculations and the geotechnical evaluation that we completed indicates that the deflection, pipe bursting, pipe crushing is well below the maximum capable load of the pipes, orders of magnitude below. So it's actually quite low, the amount of pressure that the solar panels exert on the leach field. As the chair indicated, it's actually construction, equipment concerns that we, during construction is what we're most concerned about.
But if there's a failure of some sort, you're responsible for it?
Yeah. Avalon Bay and Revision Energy would bear the cost of any sort of failure, absolutely.
Thank you.
So did Time Bond build that leach field?
We were, we were not the contractor building it. We were the design engineer.
Okay. And so I guess the question is, how accurate is the as-built?
The as-built was part of the documentation to Mass DEP. It is stamped by, I'm not sure, professional engineer or professional surveyor, but it, you know, a professional did prepare that as-built. And DEP was out there, and it was part of the certification package to Mass DEP.
And so is there a way to test the flow through those pipes after this is done?
There are ways to test the flow. There's also ways to, that the, so the system is regularly monitored by DEP as well as Avalon Bay. And there are cleanouts that would indicate that there is a potential failure. Usually, it's visibly evident if there is a failure. But I would not expect that the pipes or the system would be damaged during construction. You know, if there is a, an incident, which I'm not going to say doesn't happen, you know, you do enough construction that something could happen, somebody, you know, there could be an equipment failure, or whatever. The system is owned by Avalon Bay. Revision is coming to build this on their leaching field. So, you know, it's in their best interest to fix it. And if there is a problem, DEP is also, I would expect DEP to require a as-built survey and a certification report documenting that the project was constructed in general compliance with the drawings and the specs. So they'll work hand in hand with Revision during the project to ensure that the leach field is not compromised. And that is their concern.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we, on behalf of Revision, have to prove, that by them installing this system on the leach field, the leach field will not be compromised. You know, it currently functions fine. We don't want to add any additional equipment or any, anything else out there that could potentially compromise the system. So we have to provide adequate information to ensure that what they're proposing will not damage the system. And if there is some potential, you know, if during construction it is damaged, or in the future, that, you know, the system has a failure and not, even not associated with the project, that there is proper plans in place to help, you know, remove the system, as we discussed previously, that there's the backup fields available, and, you know, what the timeframe is to remove that system to get a replacement out there. So that's what they're, part of their review is to make sure we have all those boxes checked off.
So would you have a problem if one of the conditions was that a flow test is done after construction's finished?
Yeah. I mean, the pump house is there. So they know, you know, the levels at which it, you know, fills before it needs to be pumped and things like that. I'm sure we could provide before and after, you know, averages, I think would prob, you know, it's hard to say, you know, the usage, you know, minute by minute, but...
Yeah. I'm not intimately familiar with the pump, the pump house itself and the controls, but I'm sure that we could provide some documentation to show that, say, it starts September 1st. During construction, there's no change. It reflects the data from last year. You know, the post-construction, we still see no changes.
Just in case.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Just in case, because you've got a lot of people living in those units. I'm going to give them your phone number, so they can come live with you. Jeff?
I thought it might be helpful, since this is a DEP-approved system, could you inform the board as to any inspection reporting requirements? Like, is there a regular requirement for that every so many years?
There is. So the, the system is annually reported. And DEP, we have to provide updates on the system and provide them flow data as well. We do have to send an annual report out to Mass DEP to ensure that the system is functioning properly. They actually were aware of the projects prior to us submitting the information over to them. So they are in tune of what's going on. So we, you know, our package wasn't complete yet. They were aware of the project. They actually reached out to us directly and said, hey, you know, hey, guys, what's going on here? We haven't heard anything. And like, you know, we are anticipating submitting something to you. We're not complete yet. And that, you know, we've worked with them enough that they were just kind of interested to make sure that we were actually sending the information. So they have our direct number. They know who we are. Recently, I believe it was the last two years ago, Avalon Bay asked for an increase in flow to the system. So this was in front of DEP's purview a couple of years ago, to change from, I believe it was like 96,000 gallons a day to a, yeah, 96,000 to, I believe, 100,000 gallons a day. So they did review the increased flow to the system, and that was...
I think it's because they added 70 units, wasn't it? Something like that?
Yeah. But I'm not familiar with the project. They, I believe they added additional units, but because of the low-flow fixtures that were implemented from the, when it was constructed back in the early 2000s to now, they were able to make up the difference in the flows.
Okay. Anybody in the audience here to speak either in favor or against this? Or questions from anybody in the audience? They have to be for or against. Anybody in the audience know where Dirkie Lane is?
Do you anticipate this DEP taking long time, or would you...
I was really hoping to have it by today.
By next meeting? Would you rather go out another month, or...
Yes. I mean, I, obviously, we don't have it today, so I would, I would hope that we would have it by a month. Usually, their turnaround is 60 days. So that would be right around the 60-day window.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
As soon as we receive that feedback, we'll forward it off to Jeff to provide to the board as well.
So we're getting close to the next meeting, and you don't have anything?
We will let you know.
Just call, we'll postpone it again. No big deal.
Yep.
I guess we need a motion to move this to September 16th.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, gentlemen. See you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys enjoy your evening.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is 60 Elm Road, Susan and Gary Poleski, special permit and a variance, a non-conforming setback. Gentlemen.
Good evening. Mark Slager from Allen Engineering, here on behalf of Gary Poleski, who is sitting right here. The property is located at the very end of Elm Road, down beyond Lower Road, plus the lake. A lot that says 7,450 square feet, with an existing three-bedroom home on it. Elm Road is a private way, 20 feet wide, with approximately 16 feet of pavement. The proposal is to remove the existing house and the existing deck, and construct a new home. The lot is a non-conforming lot, and the existing house is a non-conforming structure as well, as it doesn't meet all of the setback requirements. The existing house currently has a setback of about eight feet on the left side. And in the rear, the deck is about 10 feet from the pond. And the main structure itself is about 22 feet from the pond. The new house, which will be, again, three bedrooms, here, can you just blow that one up a little bit? We're moving it a little bit further away from the left lot line. We're meeting the setback requirement on the right lot line. However, we create a new non-conformity towards the front. And that's so we can take the same distance from the lake in the rear lot line, 10 feet to the, to the house. So with that, actually, can we go to the other pictures of the neighborhood? There's a, another, this section of Elm Road, there are eight houses there now, three of which have been demolished and reconstructed within the last seven or eight years. So it's kind of a neighborhood trend that we're trying to do. This is the existing house, the front view. And keep scrolling down. That's the rear of the house now. You can see the large deck and the dock, deck off to the left. This is the side view, would be the, from the street, this would be the right-hand side of the house. You can see, again, the porch and the deck off to the side. And then this is the other side, and you can see it's kind of close to the fence, which is essentially the lot line. Keep going. This is a house at 52 Elm Road, which is just next to the beach. The beach is off to the left. And just next, there's a vacant lot in between 52 and 56. And this is 56 Elm. It looks, you know, it's one of the older camps that have been in this area for quite a while. If you go down to 58 Elm Road, is right next to Gary's. This was a house that was just rebuilt, probably about seven or eight years ago. The application came before this board and went through the same process. And then again, to the right of Gary's house is 57 Elm Road. You know, this went through the entire process. It's a new, new home, probably seven or eight years old. And then if you go down, the next one should be 55 Elm Road. Again, a new, new construction, built all around the same timeframe. 57 and 55 were actually built simultaneously, essentially. And then this is the existing house at 53 Elm Road. One more at 51 Elm Road, which is, again, one of the older existing camps that have been in the area for quite a while. So with that, we'll turn it over to the board, and be happy to answer any questions.
Open the hearing? Question? Go ahead.
Did you vote to open the hearing?
No. I think I'm gonna, we have a motion to open the public hearings. All those in favor? Jeff, you have a comment?
Few come to mind. But for right now, as the applicant just mentioned, and this might be helpful for the next petition as well. So when you're dealing with one or two family dwellings, and if the lot and dwelling are, say, non-conforming, if you're trying to intensify an existing non-conformity, that could be authorized with a special permit from the zoning board, as long as you can make the finding, it won't be substantially more detrimental. But where you are creating a new non-conformity, as you know, that does require variance relief. And if you have petitions that require both variance and special permit relief, we typically would ask that you act on the variance petition first. And then in this case, I may be mistaken, I'm not sure that the proposed plot plan was stamped by a professional land surveyor. So we would just request for consistency if the board were to approve any application, that just whatever plan is approved, do benefit from a stamp of a land surveyor, before recording.
I did, the building commissioner did ask for that, and I did forward a copy of the proposed plot plan for this one and the next application.
Okay, thank you. And it might be helpful to give a one-sentence summary, Mark, if you could, since the hearing was not opened. If you could just give a one-sentence summary of your request again, please.
Okay. Going to tear down a house and build a new one.
Sentence and a half, maybe.
Okay. Redoing it. The lot is at the end of Elm Road, 7,450 square feet, existing three-bedroom home on the lot. The existing house does not meet all the setback requirements with respect to the left-hand side and the rear. We're proposing to demolish the existing house and construct a new three-bedroom home, which will be slightly further away from the left lot line. It will meet the right sideline setback, creating a new discrepancy, or not meeting the front yard setback. So that's a new violation of the zoning. But we do maintain the same distance from the pond, which is also a non-conformity.
Thank you, Nick.
Okay. I think this plan is a little overzealous for the area. Granted, it's, it appears to be in keeping with the other houses in the area, but I just think that down in that neighborhood, it's, it's pretty tight. I think that the, the distances to the pond are going to be, you know, the most important thing that everybody's looking at. You know, the other setbacks are, you know, within, within reason. But I just think that the overall structure on the property is a little big. That's only me.
I would concur, because I looked at that, and I thought, it's about 1,000 square feet.
Being added.
Being added. So a 1,400-square-foot house, which I think is something like 1,400, fairly good-sized house, on that size lot, which is, what, 1.4 acres or something like that?
1.17 acres.
Point, you know, say, 0.15 acres? That's a big jump to add 1,000 feet on a lot that size, I think. Granted, if you're doing it, you want to maximize your living area, you want to, you know, you have a good spot there on the waterfront. But it just seems like you're really overextending every inch of that lot with the dimensions that you have. And I understand it's an improvement in some of the pictures you've shown. I mean, the existing house doesn't, from the pictures, it doesn't look like a small shack that's 100% sure to be torn down. It looks like, you know, if you kept, if you came here and said, we're doing something different with that same footprint, it's a different, it's a different matter.
It is a pretty small footprint, because the building coverage includes the deck area, which is fairly sizable on the existing house. So it would be difficult to build a, you know, a comparable three-bedroom house that meets today's market in that existing footprint.
Right off the bat, the front setback, you could pick it up by negative flush, that garage coming out seven feet, you flush that off, and you're going to have 25 feet.
Yeah. I think there's a lot going on inside the house.
Your next-door neighbors are all at flush garages.
Right. But there's, there's things going on inside the house, too, that would be affected by that.
But what if you shorten up that small little deck that's off the bedroom? Or take that deck away, and then slide that whole garage back? I mean, my, my problem with this whole thing is you've got way too many decks and everything. I mean, if you look at the houses in the neighborhood, there's one with a portico over the front door, and everything else is pretty flush to the front of the house. You've got decks going all across the waterfront. You've got a screened-in porch on the side. I mean, the house itself, I have no problem with, but I think you need to do some work on taking away from some decks here or there, in my opinion.
Yeah, I would agree with that, too. I think the porch, I mean, you have two porches here, it seems. You know, and that porch seems to be pretty, getting closer to the, to the lake than, you know, well, it's a little further than the existing deck, but it looks like you're getting rid of that existing deck. So it, it does seem kind of beefy, you know?
Yeah. I mean, I can't really go through the floor plans and make any decisions tonight, but we could certainly give it some thought.
Back in that garage, the floor plan, that's a storage area. Back in that garage there, and you could flush it, that's a storage area.
I think it's a bedroom.
It's a bedroom.
53's got the storage room.
Any other comments from the board?
I'm just curious. Nothing's been so much elevation up the proposed one. How does that stack up with the...
So I think we're talking about the overall height of the structure compared to other houses in the neighborhood.
Yeah. It's pretty comparable with the houses to either side, because it's, the first floor is close to grade in the front, and then there's a second floor above it, which is similar to the houses on either side of it, and the one across the street as well.
This is between the two renovated houses, correct?
Correct.
Any other comments from the board at all? Anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this? Anybody in the audience like to speak opposed to this? Certainly. Are you, are you together, or are you speaking by yourself?
My mother is the other piece of property that is across the street from this one.
Okay.
Jeff, just maybe in the meantime, maybe the applicant, I think you filed with the Conservation Commission as well?
Yes.
Is that meeting later this month, on the 25th?
Yeah. That meeting is a week from tonight. And we also have a septic system design that's been submitted to the Board of Health for their review as well.
So it's certainly possible the Commission may have, it might be strategic for you to hear their initial input as well?
Right.
Before...
Yeah, before we make any dramatic changes.
Can you tell me where the existing septic, or...
Yeah. If you go to the existing site plan. The existing septic is off to the right. Septic tank over, I think over where it says existing brick walkway, out in that area. The exact septic system is somewhat unknown. There weren't any Board of Health records available on it. The new system is going to be in the front right of the house, over where the trees, the utility pole will need to get moved. And the, some of those trees will have to come out. But it's going to be a long, skinny system, a presby system. So it has a little bit better environmental protection than the conventional, in my opinion at least. But again, that's, still waiting for the Board of Health to hear from that. And in the front, it's quite a bit higher than at the lake as well. So there's plenty of depth to the groundwater in the front, so it's not going to be a very modern system.
Are you folks ready?
Yes. I just wanted to...
Can you, can you come over to the microphone and tell us your name and address, so we know?
I'm Barbara Hansen, 51 Elm Road. I would like to submit, I have six letters that I put together, they've put together, of neighbors that oppose this project. And I would like them submitted at least into the minutes for this particular issue that's before you folks.
We could, we could take them in, and they would come out in the packet next month, because we don't, we can't read them here and make a decision based on this.
Are there any points you want to make, why you're proposing it?
Most of us were not that specific... Most of us were not that specific, because not used to procedures and what was to be done here, but the overall project, I know it was size was a concern, the height was a concern, the trees were a concern, and where the septic system is a concern. I hope I haven't left anything else for other individuals.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
Jeff, can you send me a copy of those?
Absolutely.
I have a question.
Come up to the microphone, please. Give your name and address, please.
Matt Mezier, 58 Elm Road. So I have a question with the larger surface area or whatever about runoff, if there's any infiltration system or something, we're, you know, downhill from this one, so with a much greater area, I just asking the question, is there, you know, should we be concerned about, you know, runoff, you know, onto our property or into our basement?
Mark, you wanna address that?
Sure. No, the lot will be graded so that it slopes away from your property, so any roof runoff will be contained on the lot. It will, it won't flow onto your yard, it will flow, flow towards the lake.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Rick Rena. I am at 55 Elm Road. That house came before the board, but it was not me, we've only been there two years. I have one question, I guess, and that is, so in, to the right side of the house in the new structure, right now, there's a kind of a gravel driveway that runs across the whole front of the house. I mean, there's a lot of parking there. What's the parking situation gonna be with the proposed plan? And what's in that area in front of the porch over where, right now, it's kinda gravel driveway?
Okay. Right where it says, the wording for "proposed bituminous driveway" is where the septic tank and the septic leach field is gonna be. The leach field is a long presby system that will run parallel to the lot line up towards the lake. The, for parking, we have a one-car garage, and we have a paved parking space in front of it. And then to the left of that is a proposed gravel driveway that could accommodate two more vehicles. So we'll have parking for a total of four vehicles.
I think, right now, that the weekends are, see, double that amount, which is fine if the people park elsewhere. The last comment I have, and I want, I would be in favor of a new home being built there. I just think this, size-wise, is a little bit beyond, I think, what's representative, even with the newer houses that have been built, and what it would mean in that end of...
My name's Bernie McNeil, and my mother lives at 51. Just wanna, again, reiterate what she said, you know, "We're against this project just because of the mere size of it." It's overcoming that lot altogether. Jeff started off by quoting 3.6.6, and the neighborhood is kind of upset with the other houses that were already built. My mother was there when they were building them, and I don't think she understood the magnitude of these giant monster properties being built around her, which is water over the bridge now, but my point is, that empty lot that you're talking about, they have a shed there now. They are getting crucified by the CPU, I mean, environmental people, because the shed is too close to the water. And these people are building this house with all these decks getting closer to the water, they're supposed to be 30 feet from the water. The trees, no one mentions that they're taking down trees to do this. I don't know if they're doing it on this property, but the next property, they're taking trees down. I was always under the impression you couldn't take trees down within the wetlands, within so many feet of the wetlands. I really wanna speak a little bit more on the next property, but I just wanted to let you know, my mother's not against them building a new house, she's just against the size of it all, so, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience?
Just that question on the runoff market, I mean, it looks like, the diagram, the pitch of the roof on the garage goes in the opposite direction. Looks like a lot more roof surface than what exists.
Yes, there is.
And that roof now is like, simple, plain, straightforward. Your roof lines and your, it seems like your area of asphalt is, I don't know, three times greater, probably, I don't know.
I don't know.
And there's not a lot of, not a lot of space, I mean, the house is the lot, so...
Yeah, the surface area of the house and the decking is about, as we mentioned early, about 1,000 square feet more. The, where it says "bituminous driveway," there's actually a paved driveway there now, it's just kinda not in great shape, but there is a paved driveway there now. I don't have the numbers as to how much pavement's there versus how much we're proposing, but the driveway itself is only 14 by 18, roughly, so, you know, quick math, that's, what, 280 square feet or so?
Is that 1,000 square feet just of the house? That doesn't include the porches and the decks?
No. If you look at the existing house with porches versus the proposed house with porches, it's about 1,000 square feet more.
Does that include the decks, or just the porch? Is that decks and porches, or just porches?
Decks, porches, and...
Everything.
And the house, yeah.
How much livable space is...
I don't know how much living space there is in the new house. The applicant would also like to address the board, too.
I'll try to answer some of the questions, I'll try to address some of the, I guess, perceived issues. For one, the amount of square footage in total, the existing house does not have a basement. It has a small portion of the crawl space has been, I guess, when the house was converted from a cottage to a, an all-year-round house, they put a smaller, maybe a quarter, or less than a quarter of the space of the floor plan downstairs for the furnace, hot water heater, and washer dryer. So, you know, a good deal of the additional square footage that's represented in the drawings and just in the notations is a full basement. Part of the reason for the full basement is, this is gonna become our retirement home, our, you know, we have another home, we only live here part-time, and as my wife and I age, as things change, as our kids are now out of college, this is gonna be the home where we live, and it's gonna get passed on. My wife is fifth generation in Westford, her parents met as kids on the lake, her grandparents, we still have a house on Trails End Road that was a camp that her grandparents had. The issue with the location to the water, and I think someone just commented that, you know, we're moving closer to the water, we're not. I mean, we're very sensitive about the water, and very sensitive about the lake and the quality of it. The house itself is gonna be further back, but the deck, if you've been out that way, mosquitoes are just, you know, at the end of the day, the day's over, you know, without a screened porch. So on the right side of the house, that screened porch is, that's, those would be sonotubes into the ground. Thinking of some of the other concerns or comments that were made.
So, can we back up one minute?
Sure.
The statement that you made saying that a lot of the square footage is in the full basement?
Well, not, not a lot of it, the additional square footage, so right now, it's a one-story home.
Correct.
It's gonna become a two-story home with a full basement.
Correct. So this, this number, this 1,000-square-feet number, has nothing to do with the basement? It's the first, that's the first floor and the second floor addition, so I think that statement, you can retract and say, that's not possible, because the basement's the basement, and so, the other thing that concerns me, too, is to get a full basement in there, how far out of the, out of the ground does the top of that slab or that foundation have to sit?
We actually put it so that the cellar floor is above the 100-year floodplain, so the new house is actually outside the floodplain, whereas the existing house is within the floodplain. So we did that, so we could save a little money on flood insurance. The cellar floor that's there now is not much different, it may be a little bit lower, so we're building pretty much on the same elevation. But there's also about a six or seven-foot grade difference between the front of the house and the back.
Right.
So with the cellar floor at, I think it's 70, 172 or 172 and a half, and then we're, you know, eight feet above that to the top of foundation, so we're at 181 in the front, I don't see the numbers there, but it's not that much out of the ground, maybe three feet or so from top of foundation. Can you zoom in on the left one? Yeah. I just wanna see if I could read the numbers.
176.
Okay.
174 at the street, 176 going up the hill towards the lake. And you're gonna be at 180-something?
Yeah.
So you're gonna have three feet of foundation sticking out of the ground, in order to get a full basement here.
Yeah. And there might be a little bit of fill, to cut it down to like two feet, one and a half feet, 'cause we don't wanna have too many steps coming in off the front porch, and we keep the garage slab up a little bit, too.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt, but go ahead.
No, that's okay. A couple of the issues that were raised, you know, parking, I could certainly say that, that parking is a sensitive subject. I'm smiling. I could say that there's, we do not park on that road, even though it's a private road. I've become the valet for the family, and they either park elsewhere, they carpool, or I pack 'em in, but they do not park on that road, so we wouldn't be, you know, infringing upon anyone's existing space. The parking situation will diminish over time, because kids move away, family, you know, families change. We dropped one off going to college today, you know, so she won't be around, and parking has always been a sensitive subject, and I would like to think that we've been as respectful as possible with not being, you know, in any way, and taking space that's not ours.
Master bedrooms downstairs?
Pardon me?
Master bedrooms downstairs?
It is.
How many people gonna live in this dwelling?
Right now, it's my wife and myself.
So you're really building on spec with these extra bedrooms?
I'm sorry?
You're really building for spec on these extra bedrooms?
No, it's gonna be, it's gonna be in the family. I mean, the house that we have on Trails End has been in the family for 60 or so years. I mean, this is gonna be my children's home, and I, it's a three-bedroom house now, sir.
It's all one floor, though, right? Well, you understand, you want it as a retirement home, as, you know, usually retirement homes, you're going from two stories to one story to make it more convenient for your...
Okay, so I'm sorry. So when I say retirement home, we have another home in Massachusetts. This is gonna become our sole residence. The other house is gonna get sold, and in time, my grandchildren will be able to go to Westford schools.
So, yeah, I mean, sometimes people think of a retirement home as maybe one bedroom or two bedrooms, just for the couple that retires, but it's still the family home, too, where you'll have the children coming in and the grandchildren, so when they come in to visit for, say, the holidays or extended vacations.
It's in the lake in the summer, for sure, yeah.
And just another point, I know that was made, you know, in the reference of the size of the home, that's a lot and a half, that particular lot was a lot and a half that was divided years ago, so I think it's fairly consistent with the percentage of house on the lot compared to other homes in the area, it's just it's a bigger lot, so if the footprint is bigger, it may, you know, sound or look larger, but it's a larger lot, so the coverage is not all that different than the other homes.
So, how many cars can you park in the existing driveway right now in front of that house? 'Cause it's got a very large asphalt area in front of the entire house, right?
Well, we have a real picture.
Oh, I'm just saying, how many cars can you fit across the front of that house, on the existing pavement?
I personally could put probably, if I parked them, 12 cars. But that's with not being able to get out of the car, you can't get in a passenger door.
So safely, we could say eight cars.
That include the lawn? Yeah, looks like it's stoned.
Well, okay, so from this picture, if you do four across, you know, four cars across, probably eight, you know, two, two, depends if it's a compact car, then two, and then one.
I'm just saying, considerably, eight cars. I think what's been expressed here is you're gonna go from eight comfortable cars parking to four, and where is the rest of the cars gonna park? Now, you've said you're gonna cart 'em down the street or whatever, but I'm just trying to clarify where your neighbors are coming from, that you have a nice eight-car parking area, and now you're gonna reduce it down to four.
Well, he could fit eight cars, but he doesn't usually fit eight cars.
Right. I'm just trying to clarify for everyone involved here that, that's one of the things.
So, I'm smiling through this. Would you be able to fit more than four cars on that lot, because the side setback is gonna be wide enough, you know, for cars to be put there if we had to? That's not the intention?
Well, no, it was proposed, one in the garage, one in the driveway, and two on the gravel driveway. That's how it was just proposed to us.
And I think the problem with the side yard is, Mark said you have a septic system going in there, and I'm sure it's not gonna be H20 loading.
No, other side.
Yeah, that's to the right of the driveway?
Which means you can't park on the lawn over there, is what Scott's...
So you're saying down the left side of the house?
No, down the right, right side of the house.
Looking at the house, the septic is on the right.
Kind of in front of the porch, in front of the porch, near the right-hand lot line, that's where the septic's going.
Right.
And there'll actually be a small retaining wall in the front, so there won't be any vehicle traffic into the front of the house, over where the porch is. It'll just be from the garage to the left.
Okay.
And given the area here, I think it could probably fit five cars, pretty wide, but, you know, practicality, given by, you know, if you look at the requirement for a space in the zoning, it would fit four cars.
And, I guess if I may, is there a certain number of spaces required per three-bedroom home?
With zoning, I think zoning typically requires two parts, they look for two parking spaces per dwelling.
So if there's four, or five, or six, it at least meets that requirement?
It's not really a zoning issue, it's kind of an issue where we're looking down the road. For some reason, you don't own this house anymore, and somebody else owns this house, that's where we're looking at. Because as you know, if you have a house at the lake, everybody's your friend, they come and eat your hot dogs, they drink your beer, so it's just the way it is.
I'm aware of that, believe me, I'm aware of that.
And it's tight down there on Elm Road, you know, and to have cars in the street is not fair to the other neighbors, and that's kinda what we're just talking out loud to talk about here. Question from the back, please?
Yeah? Since I think I was the one that brought up the parking issue initially, and so I just wanna say for the record, Gary's right, he is very respectful. Currently, side of their existing driveway, it's a lot every weekend, but they're all on his property. The concern would be, all those people not come any longer, or what do we do with them? Because you're not obviously gonna be able to do that, at least from what I see. So, but he's very respectful, as is.
Jeff? So, Mr. Chair, I don't know if it might be helpful for the applicant, they're going before the Conservation Commission, there could very well be some competing interests at play, even though the wetland resource areas aren't necessarily, you know, your purview. There could be pressure for them to perhaps shift or better protect the resource areas, and yet you have a variance petition before you for creating a new conformity with respect to the front yard. I don't know if the board wants to, at least for the benefit of the applicant, discuss if you felt that they've addressed the variance criteria, because that could certainly come into play, and I think, you know, it'd be good for the applicant to stand with respect to criteria.
Well, I think, at least where I stand, and we can take a little straw pull, I think you've heard comments from already up here, that the, the house itself probably is not overdone, but I think the number of decks and porches is, 'cause it's adding to the overall size of the house. As Jeff said, you still have to go to Conservation... As Jeff said, you still have to go to conservation. What we don't want to do is give you an approval for some things. You go to conservation and conservation says nuh-uh, then you've gotta come back to us to modify everything. This board does everything once, hopefully. So.
You could meet the front yard setback. That's the problem. You could meet and you're just going, disregard it entirely. By adding that little seven-foot bump off with the garage.
So I think my suggestion would be that we continue this to the next meeting. You go to conservation and see how you fare. And in the meantime, either before conservation or after conservation, depending on what they tell you, you know, really look at this plan and say, what can I do without? And if you can't do without anything, come back. That's your right. You know, the special permit, the criteria, I mean, again, I think Jeff's always alerting us to that. Shall not cause substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Sometimes we hear, you know, the next-door neighbors, but I'm curious to see what we have for documentation here. But it sounds like there's some pushback from the neighbors, thinking that the scope of this is detrimental. Whether it's vision, whether it's parking, whether it's extra traffic, whether it's just the general scope, the runoff. I don't know what's more detrimental, one issue is more detrimental than another. But we're hearing from some of the neighbors that they think, overall, there's some detriment to your proposal in its scope. Height, a lot higher than what's there. Who's behind you is gonna be looking at a billboard versus a bench. You know, this, and I think all those things come into play to make the, to have us look more carefully at the criteria that says it can't be more substantially detrimental than what's there now.
Sure, and I understand that. And I think that, you know, the two budding neighbors that spoke, both of those issues were addressed. The runoff and the parking. I just get a little, I'm just trying to think forward, the parking issue that seems to be an issue to the board. Having three or four more spaces than required. All due respect, I mean, I could die tomorrow and the house may be sold. Somebody may not have.
Well, your own admission is this house is gonna stay in the family forever. I mean, I don't know, that's the statement you can't make. This one here you make, that's possible. Saying my family's gonna take the house, or we have grandchildren who are gonna go to school here, we have no way of knowing that.
Neither do I. I mean, that's my hope.
But that's, but that's what you're hanging your hat on here.
No, sir. I'm not hanging my hat. I'm just saying, my hope would be that we build a home that will stay in the family. And I have no idea where my children are gonna end up, or whether, you know, my grandkids, if there will be any grandkids. I mean, I don't have them yet. This is really, go ahead.
I think the parking is just a concern. It's been addressed by neighbors, how you've been faithful and very accommodating. Which we understand now. So it's just a concern at this point. We're not shutting it down because of parking. It's just a concern going from eight spaces to four. And like Scott said, everybody and their brothers coming there in the summer. So it's a concern. It's not, I don't think it's a detriment at this point. But I think the detriment to you is, there's some work that can be done creativity-wise, that you don't need the non-conformity in the front. By sacrificing part of that back deck behind the bedroom, you can slide the front of that house back and be twenty-five feet. You can take that side porch that's screened in, and you can screen in underneath the deck in the back. And that takes you away from the lake even more. I think there's ways you can work at things to make this more conforming than it is.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's just, it seems like there's a lot going on on the piece of property. In that you could probably condense some of the uses that you are proposing, you know, like the porches and stuff like that. And that would hopefully bring you further away from the water and, you know, make it maybe a little easier to go forward to board.
And as Jeff pointed out, we have Conservation Commission next Wednesday, and their concern is gonna be distance from the lake, which is gonna affect how far we are from the street. So we have a balancing act that we're gonna have to deal with. So I think, obviously, the best thing is to just continue, wait to see what we, how the Conservation Commission reacts. And then, you know, combine everybody's thoughts and come back, you know, next meeting and
How many trees do you think are gonna be taken down? I was mentioning.
Probably four.
Along the line?
Yeah, there's two in the front right, right where it says porch. Those are probably gonna come down for the septic system. And then there's two right over by the screen porch, one in the middle of the screen porch, one at the bottom of the stairs.
And that's another conservation issue, correct? So I think you're correct in the fact that this board should continue this, see how you do with conservation. And then depending on what they say, we'll have a pretty good idea of whether you're gonna squash things or what has to be done.
Mrs. Scott, you have one other suggestion. I mean, this is a very compact area. As I understand it, five or six of your neighbors are giving you some pushback. So you may, on your own, just want to meet with them. Perhaps explain what it is you're trying to do and see what they might be more comfortable with. Because, you know, it's unfortunate, but I think a couple of those houses down there are already too big. And I think if, with the scope of what you're requesting, I think it's just too much for that lot and too much for that particular neighborhood on the lake is probably too much. Looks great, but it's just too big, I think.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, we need a motion to continue this till Thursday?
Sixteenth?
September sixteenth. All those in favor?
Sorry, who was the second on that?
Jay was?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, next item on the agenda is fifty-three Elm Road. They have a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Sorry, who made the motion? The recording secretary has, sometimes she has difficulty, and we think it's gonna be even worse with masks, so.
What did you say?
Yeah.
I feel bad for the people that are watching on TV. They're not gonna know who's talking.
Yeah. All those in favor? Mr. Schlegel, you're up again, I guess.
Thank you. Again, Mark Schlegel from Allen Engineering, here on behalf of Robert and Margaret Gibbons, fifty-three Elm Road. They are in the audience with us this evening. And Dan Doherty will be the builder on the property, and he's to my left. Again, this is similar to the prior proposal in that we have a lot on the end of Elm Road. This is on the right-hand side of Elm Road and backs up to a little cove that's part of that massive lake. The lot is about fifty-three hundred square feet. There's an existing two-bedroom home on the lot now with a paved driveway, a small storage shed. Frontage on Elm Road of about eighty-something, eighty-seven feet. Elm Road's a twenty-five-foot wide private way with about sixteen feet of pavement. We're proposing to demolish the existing house and construct a new two-bedroom home. The new home will, the existing home does not meet all of the setbacks. It does not meet the front yard setback. It's only seven and a half feet from the road. The left side meets the setback. It's twenty-two feet or twenty-one point nine, and then the right side is eight point eight. And the rear house is thirty-five point eight feet for the rear. Again, we're constructing, proposing to construct a new two-bedroom home. It's a fairly modest footprint, only about six hundred square feet or so more than what's there now. However, given that the lot is extremely narrow, it's only forty-two feet wide when you get down to the lake. We have a new septic system going in the front, right where it says Lot Ten on the proposed plan. So in the front yard, that'll be the septic system. We have to provide enough room for that. So it pushes the house a little bit closer to the lake. We would be twenty-one point three feet to the lake for the proposed house. And we would also be closer to each side lot line in the back and on the left. It would be creating a new non-conformity. However, we will be further away from the street. It'll be thirteen point nine feet as opposed to seven point five feet. There's currently enough parking for possibly two cars end to end on a narrow driveway. It's actually one driveway that's kind of shared. There's a lot line in the middle of it, but it's all paved. The new house will have a two-car garage, and it will also have two-foot, two-car wide driveway. So there'd be enough car parking for four cars in the proposed house. The entire lot is within the floodplain. So we would be proposing to fill up around the house and raise the house so that the cellar floor elevation is above the floodplain. This particular house has a cellar floor, and then it has a first floor with all of the living space on the first floor. And then some, some living area on the basement floor with a walkout basement. So it's essentially a one-and-a-half-story house. Above the first floor living area is just attic. So we certainly meet the height requirement. If you look at the front elevation view, you can see that we have the garage at a lower level. Kind of at the cellar floor level. And then you go up some stairs on the outside, and that brings you into the main living area of the house. So it's essentially a garage under, but it's only a one-story house above the garage. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board for questions or comments.
It was.
It was emailed.
Sierra's gonna try to put that up.
It's separate.
Separate email.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just while we wait, as we discussed in the prior petition, variance is needed to authorize the creation of the two new non-conformities. Where a special permit relief can be granted to authorize the rest.
So the top of the foundation wall is gonna be about what elevation?
Uh, let's see, seventy-two, about the same as the other one, one eighty-one or so? One eighty?
That's a lot of fill all in there.
Yeah, there's, well, the ground grade around it is gonna be about one seventy-one, one seventy-two around the foundation, all the way around. Cellar, the cellar floor is gonna be that. We're not gonna fill up around the whole house. So there's gonna be some foundation. Actually, what they'll do is they'll have the foundation, they'll step the side of the foundation, and maybe you can talk to that too. So it'll be more framing on the side than exposed concrete. In the front, where we have the septic system, again, there'll be a little bit of fill, maybe three feet of fill or so in front. And then you'll have the steps that go up to the top.
So if the road's at one seventy-one, you're saying that you're gonna be at one seventy-four, one seventy-five in that front area?
Probably a little lower than that. I think one seventy, it was one seventy-three. I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head. So it's maybe about a two-foot, two-and-a-half-foot fill in the front yard.
Okay. And then the existing house on Elm Road, it says existing house in this plan. Are you gonna fill to that, or what are you gonna do with that?
The existing house to the budding house, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
No, there'll be, there'll be no work on that property. There'll be a small retaining wall there. And then the runoff from the lawn area will either be directed towards the street or towards the lake in the back. Won't be any water flowing towards that existing house on either side.
Any comments from the board?
How big is that sewing and craft room with the full back?
Sewing and craft room. I don't know if we've got a final dimension on that. This is just kind of an estimate.
That's a big space for a craft and sewing room with a full back. I mean.
Well, it's a walkout basement, and that's what the idea is now, is to just have, you know, sewing room, craft room. You know, maybe at some point, it could be, I don't know. We don't know. Probably more like a game room. You could do sewing and crafts or a lot of things in there.
Midge could actually speak to that with the opponent. That's what she does. She does quilting and stuff, so that's really what the whole room is. And the only reason is really a tub in there so they can clean up griffin. That's their dog, so.
Anybody in the audience like to speak to this?
Question. What's, when you, if you were to do the proposed house, how far are you from the neighbor on the left? I think it's fifty-five.
Five feet from the lot line in the back now.
Six point two. Tried to keep it close to parallel to that house. So it's probably about, looks like maybe about eighteen feet, twenty feet, somewhere around there.
Okay, name for the record, please?
Yes. Barbara Hanson, fifty-one Elm Road. I'm an immediate abutter. My son Vernon McNeil will speak for me, but I also have my son Brian here. We haven't gone through this before, so I hope you'll be a little bit lenient with us as fancy graphs, et cetera. But I have another six objection signed that I'd like into the record. Things that we have put together, if you will just allow us a few minutes to present.
Right ahead.
I'm Barney McNeil, and that's my mother. Like that last guy said, this house has been in the family since nineteen sixty-seven. You know, my grandfather owned this property, and my mother's tried to be a good neighbor to everybody. We're not opposed to someone better in the neighborhood. She tried to speak to this gentleman, and he said, take me to court if you don't like what I'm telling you. So, yes, that is true.
Listen, I don't need you guys to get into an argument here.
I don't want to start trouble either. Let me stick to the facts.
Questions or some pros and cons, that's all I want to hear.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay.
This is a little upsetting. First of all, they're requesting a variance on the side yard setback that says, and the letter said, six point two. Can you blow up that picture on the right, please? Can you guys see right there? It says five point four. And then the deck is even closer. So if you measure the deck, the deck is three, three feet, maybe two and a half feet. And he's saying there's gonna be a retaining wall there. That deck spills out to where my mother's yard is. The size of this project is a little, seems a little excessive for the neighborhood. A few years ago, my mother's former neighbor put in plans to do the same exact thing, and it shows where the lot line is. Right now, we're in a little bit of a dispute over the lot line. So the lot line, I'm trying to get a surveyor. We have one lined up for next week. But because of COVID, everything is backlog, so I wasn't able to get the surveyor before this meeting. So my mother wrote a little, a couple notes, if you give me five minutes to If you give me five minutes to read what my mother wrote, thank you. Good evening, Chairman McKay, and board members. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I speak on behalf of my mother, Barbara Hanson, fifty-one Elm Road. She's a widow, senior citizen, has been in the property since nineteen sixty-seven. She's also a polite and formal lady. Although the permit for fifty-three Elm Road was not requested by her, this committee continuance or postponement, we were requesting. The two major issues were the letter of notification. My mother never received the letter of notification of this meeting. And I don't know how that whole process works. Is there a certain timeframe from when the letter is sent out to when people get the letter?
Yes. Jeff, do you wanna give them the details?
So typically, I could go check the date that it was sent out, but we do receive a certified list of abutters from the assessing department. Our department, rather than the applicant, we prepare and send those notifications by certified mail. So we do have records that the abutters were sent to mail. Whether or not they received or something happened during the mail, we can't speak to that. We can only tell you that we sent notices. We can check the date for you if you'd like. We can also confirm...
Concerned about time span. Do you have a time span, like with thirty days?
No, there's no such requirement by law. No. In fact, there isn't actually a specific minimum day requirement either. We just always try to get them out, you know, as early as practical, given the workload. So typically, it's about, probably, we send them usually about two weeks or so in advance. We can confirm the date, and we can also confirm whether or not you were listed as a intended recipient. So we're happy to do that.
Page three of six, Jeff. Barbara Hanson, fifty-one Elm Road.
So...
Okay.
They just wanted to let it be known, she was never received it, so we're also behind the gun trying to figure out what was going on. My mother tried to add my name onto the mailing list, and they said they can't add it on until January because of the tax paperwork. Is that true?
I can't speak to that. The assessing department is the one who is legally charged with updating and maintaining those lists, and they're the ones that provide the certified list of abutters and the mailing labels for that. I can't speak to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, according to the staff report, the notice of public hearing was mailed to the parties in interest on July twenty-eighth.
Right. I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying my mother never received it. She's presented the six letters that you guys know about. We're kinda disputing the lot line, and I have on file here at the town, there's a plot plan on file from the previous person that came, Norman, who came here, my mother's old neighborhood neighbor, and he was building a house on that property. So you can clearly see the dark in the line. The line that they have marked out is five feet different from where this line is on this piece of paper here.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
What plan is that? Is that a plot plan, a certified plot plan, or a septic design, or...
This was septic design. I think this was the building designing.
Okay. So this particular plan, this would not be stamped by a land surveyor, and this stamp is with respect to the septic design. So a septic design should not be used for purposes of boundary retracement.
Right. She, we also have the book and deed number of the...
Massachusetts, no, I've never...
...the registry of the filing of the property line is.
Mm-hmm.
August eighteen, nineteen fifty-two, and it is filed.
Copy of that, too. Some of the things my mother's concerned about are the public water supply, the private water supply, groundwater supply. This was the first we heard of that retaining wall. I don't know how they're gonna do that retaining wall and keep the side yard. Protection of the lagoon. They're also taking down four trees here to do this property, and they're all within feet of the wetlands. This was what I was told. The structure is non-conforming, and according to three point six point five of the zoning board, it's not supposed to create a detriment to the neighborhood, and right now, we feel it's creating a detriment to the neighborhood. Then getting back to the side yard setback, they were request, they were requesting the side yard of...
Is that it really?
I was just looking for the picture that she had up there.
It's five point four to the corner of the house.
Yes. But their, their variance is requesting six point four, the other side of the property.
That's the other side of the property, six point two.
So the variance isn't even put in properly.
That variance doesn't include our side.
Jeff?
So, if I may, so if you're looking at the lot from the street, so the left lot line, currently the existing structure meets the side yard setback, and the proposed structure would violate the side yard setback. That's a new non-conformity. That would require a variance. The right lot line is looking from the street. That's an existing non-conformity. The existing dwelling does not meet the side yard setback, and they want to intensify for part of the proposed dwelling, that side yard setback. That can be granted potentially with a special permit, not a variance, if the board can make the finding that the proposal would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So one side needs variance relief, and the other would require a special permit relief. I hope that clarifies.
So there's more than one thing going on here?
I'm not, I don't know a lot about these things, but that's, that's what I was, we were referring to, that they need a special permit outside.
Mm-hmm.
But that was variance, and the deck even gets even closer, if you can see the deck run out from the corner. My mother's not trying to stop these people from building a house or improving their property. She was all for it when her previous neighbor was gonna do it, and we're all for it, too. We just wanna work together with these people and try to make a good neighborhood. We don't wanna be enemies with any of our neighbors. In the neighborhood, this is sixty-seven, and we hope to keep it in the family also for a lot longer, and thank you for letting me speak to you.
Sure, you're welcome. Anybody else to speak to this? Come up to the microphone, we have your name, please.
Rick Rena, fifty-five Elm Road. So as the other abutter, first of all, the size of the building, the square footage, you said the first floor, is how much?
Six thousand. Sixteen hundred, fifteen seventy-four, what I got for the found, for the footprint, which is all the first floor.
So I, my overall feeling, and, you know, it's, the six point two in the back is pretty tight. I think that we're pretty tight, too. And so it's hard, I think, given the shape of the lot, to improve it much more without having to have some level of setback. So I'm not terribly opposed to that. It's, it's tight. I'm not gonna speak to the other side, 'cause that really doesn't affect me at all. I do think the net result is something that's on a much smaller scale than the previous home that we talked about, and I think is certainly more in line with the other houses that have been torn down and rebuilt on the street.
Mm-hmm. Jeffrey?
Yes, so we just offer the same suggestion to you before these folks go to conservation. Is that also scheduled for?
Yes, it is.
So if the board has any thoughts or comments, particularly with respect to the variance petitions, the, the left lot line, and the new non-conformity for the rear lot line, before these folks go to conservation, it might be worthwhile if you tell them your thoughts about those types of petitions right now.
Um, I, I guess it's gonna be the same conversation we had for the last one. You know, we can make all kinds of assumptions here. If conservation says no, then go back to the drawing board. The, the plan with the new proposal has a guy named Mark Schlegler who signed it, and I'm assuming he knows what he's doing. So, you know, the next-door neighbors are gonna have their surveyor come in, assuming that it's gonna be the same. The other thing I would probably like to know is, the corner of that deck, what's gonna be the offset of that?
Okay.
And, you know, it might just be a case where that deck gets moved over a little bit or something, you know. That's all I had. Anybody else have any...
We need some information. They're gonna put a retaining wall there.
Mm-hmm.
What, somewhere near here?
What question? That was my question. What about the retaining wall? That's, that's on the side bordering fifty-one?
Yes. Yeah, it's mostly in the...
The house is only five, five-and-a-half feet from the retaining wall?
It's actually only in the front part. See, we're removing the driveway. There'll be a retaining wall there that's, I think, two-and-a-half to three feet at the, at the most. And that'll run down to essentially where that, you'll see, where the dimension seventeen point seven is. It'll actually go in towards the house there, and that'll be just where the septic tank and the leach field is in the front to support that. And then the rest of that will actually be at close to grade. We're gonna fill up a little bit around the foundation, slope down, and then, you know, we'll create some kind of a swale to make sure it doesn't go onto the neighbor's property, and it'll go down towards the lake.
Are you proposing a Presby there, too?
Excuse me?
Are you proposing a Presby system there, too?
Uh, no, that's actually a geomat system. It's a lower-profile system. We needed to do as low a profile as possible because of the groundwater and separation from, you know, water level is essentially at the lake elevation, so we didn't have as much room to play with.
So can we have a little bit more of a detailed drawing on the wall the next time?
Sure.
So that everybody is comfortable with it, understands where it's gonna go. The other side, it's just gonna be graded into the other neighbor? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, it'll actually be a swale, 'cause the other neighbor is quite a bit higher. So that slopes down. We're gonna slope from ours, and that effect is a swale. It'll drive everything from the street down towards the lake.
Okay. And anybody else have anything?
Is there any thought, any screening on either side? Screening?
Screening?
Plant some shrubs, fence.
Trees, anything to...
Well, I think that's probably whatever the conservation really wants us to do. If we cut down a tree, we generally plant tree, so. Just going in there and taking something down and leaving it.
Mm-hmm. Are you applying like a fence or something?
No, it's just, where there's questions on one side, if this was to go through, it'd be amicable to put something in between, that's all.
Yeah, I would suggest probably shrubs might be a little bit better, but sometimes when you put too much stuff, it just kinda makes everything feel smaller.
No, I'm not getting any specifics, 'cause there's a few steps before we get there.
We don't, we don't have any intention of doing anything like that at this time.
Okay.
My only comment is just the deck, I guess, how big is that deck there? Is that just...
Well, deck, I think it was only like six by ten or something.
Yeah.
Five by ten. And also doesn't have stairs going off of it. It's just something to go off. The back door.
How high off the ground is that deck gonna be?
Probably gonna be pretty much on grade.
The deck.
The deck, it's up? Oh, in the back. Yeah, that'll be...
The deck on the back'll be...
It'll be, well, seven feet.
Seven, eight feet.
It'd be great to have those numbers next to the line, how far it is. I don't know how you can come here with, these, these plans are not state the closest point.
Yeah, I...
It's pretty obvious that you...
Yeah, I don't know how that happened. I'll make sure I give that dimension, and we'll talk about any other revisions that the commission might, Conservation Commission might suggest, too.
Okay. So I think once again, my suggestion would be, come back from the September meeting. You have met with conservation at that point. You might have a more clearer idea of what you're gonna be able to do and what you're not gonna be able to do. And once again, if conservation is not being, telling you what you need to do at one meeting, if you need to push this off again, then we'll push it off again. Everybody all right with that?
Yeah, sounds good.
So I need a motion to continue...
Motion to continue the sixteenth of September?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So you folks realize that there's not gonna be a notification sent to you for the September sixteenth meeting?
No, we didn't know that.
Okay, so put it in your phone, write it on the calendar, and whatever you do, that's when it's gonna happen. You can look, go online and look and see where you fall in the agenda, but there won't be another legal notice sent out. Okay?
I appreciate it.
Just so you understand.
Sir, may I ask another question? When is the Conservation Committee meeting? And are we allowed at least to go to that?
Oh, yeah. No, you're allowed.
So I think it's on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
This month, and it is right in this room here, I believe.
I don't recall what, what time either exists on the agenda, but we will have the agenda available, probably the end of this month.
Yeah, you can go to all these meetings. They're open meetings.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Have a good night.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Two Mamie Lane, Dana and Jennifer Kelly for a variance to install a twenty-four-foot above-ground pool with an eighteen-foot rear yard setback with thirty feet is required. Uh, can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You get that, Jeff?
Okay, yes, sir. Paul McMillan I have is making the motion.
I have Jay Enos second.
Sounds good.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dana, Dana Kelly, and I live at Two Mamie Lane. We are looking to put a twenty-four-foot round above-ground pool in our side yard there. And, you know, we're looking for the, the variance because of the, how close it is to our neighbors, the McGinn's. You know, we're, we're in a tough spot because of the odd shape of our plot plan, of our plot that we have, and where our septic is as well, so. And also trying to do our best to keep it in a fair spot, you know, between all of our neighbors at Four Mamie Lane and then the McGinn's as well.
Because of the topography of the land there also, it does create somewhat of a hardship because of the hill and everything that's going on in there. And you are tucked in there. Mamie Lane is kind of in its own little world in there. Some of the neighbors in Crown Road that back up to you are probably the closest people to you. But I, I really don't have a problem with any of it. Anybody else that has any comments? Anybody else that have any comments?
So this is an above-ground pool, right?
Yeah, it's just an above-ground pool. And you mentioned the topography, and my biggest concern, too, and I'm relatively close to the McGinn's, and their home sits, you know, the land slopes well away from them.
Mm-hmm.
You know, obviously Boston Road goes uphill going towards their plot, so if anything were to happen with the pool, I mean, it wouldn't even, it's probably from the top of the pool, it'll probably be six or seven feet above, you know, where their home is located, so.
Mm-hmm. So to install this, there'll be no tree cutting or major construction?
Nope.
Plug and play, so to speak?
Yep.
So the screening and everything?
Is there a fence required or not?
I believe there is.
Because how does that impact that?
I was under the impression that the town law was, like, obviously I talked to the pool company, and I asked if the fence was required around the, you know, the pool itself.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought that because of the height of the pool, I think it's a four or five-foot high pool, that it wasn't required around the pool. I could be wrong, but...
I could be wrong, too. I don't know.
I mean, we could certainly check with the billing commissioner. He would be the one to give us a definitive answer.
Well, there's a lot of pools in town without fences around them.
Above ground, yeah.
The pool contractor told me that, you know, when I first spoke to him, he asked where I was located.
It's typically the bloat, right? I mean...
Yeah, a lot of above grounds in town that don't have...
Is it level where you're going to put it? Do you have to put a retaining wall around it?
It's level where it is. Yeah.
I know it drops off over there really bad, but... You know, whether you need it or not, it's probably for your satisfaction.
Right, yeah. I mean, I've got, yeah, I've got two kids and a wife that stays home with the kids and would love to...
Why are you worried about your neighbor's kids or getting in you?
Yeah, we actually have a, we have a camera on the corner of our, so...
Okay, but I can't... Camera's too late.
Yeah. A lot of times the above-ground pools, they have railings that mount right to the deck of the pool and go around.
Right.
And then you have a set of stairs that flops down, and that's how you get in and out.
Right.
So...
Well, he's going to have to pull a permit, so the building inspector's going to make him do what he needs to do.
Yep. Right.
You can't walk it.
I don't have a problem with it.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
And I don't see any from the audience, because there's nobody here. Jeff, any comment, question?
No, just if you're satisfied with the variance criteria.
I would say, you know, again, we had this discussion a while back on pools generally. People have initiated. I think, you know, the variance criteria certainly, I mean, denial on pool is not, certainly within the hardship criteria, I think, but I have a lot less concern over something like this versus an in-ground permanent structure pool.
Mm-hmm.
That's, you know, your kids are, sometime be too old, and you're going to be, that's not a Russell, you're going to be...
My youngest is four and a half. I hope it lasts 14 years.
You may not get 14 yet.
Even better.
Three at the same time.
So we need a motion to approve a variance from Appendix C.
Showing to close the public hearing.
We'll close the public hearing. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Omo.
Second. You get that?
Yes, thank you.
All those in favor?
All right.
So once again, a variance for Appendix C from the town of Westwood zoning bylaws for a 24-foot diameter above-ground pool with an 18-foot rear yard setback with 30 feet is required. Can I have that motion?
Omo.
Second.
Got it?
Got it.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott F.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will also vote the affirmative. We have 14 days to write the decision, and there is a 20-day appeal period, and then you can start digging.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Good luck.
It'd be very popular.
Especially tonight.
Happy wife, happy life.
That's for sure.
Okay, we have some general business.
So, Mr. Chair, with respect to the application checklist.
Mm-hmm.
We've been routinely having the building commissioner prepare zoning opinions, and we encourage all applicants to secure that before making application to this board. As you can imagine, even some of the petitions you had tonight, they think they know what it is, and, you know, it could be falling under multiple sections, and if they don't ask for the right things, it could create, you know, a big delay, or amending their public hearing, the notice might not be sufficient. So we think it's in everyone's best interest to get the opinion before they file, so we just want to be more clear about that for folks who don't come in and talk to us and just start looking at the requirements online. So we'd like to just, right now, it's not a formal requirement. We may speak with council about what steps would be needed to make it a requirement, but for the here and now, we think it's a good step to just kind of blast out there, make everyone aware, we want this, we hope you get this. If you don't do it, you know, it could be creating more delays, time, new notices, and, you know, that alone might be enough to encourage them to get that, because we think it's good for everyone, so.
So in order to get this letter of opinion, do they have to submit building plans?
They need to submit enough information for the commissioner to know. Usually it might take a plot plan, but it's enough, it may not be all that they need for a building permit application, but it has to be enough for the commissioner to make a determination.
They don't need certified plans at that point.
Yep. So we just, we think, after all, they need to take that information, submit it to the zoning board anyhow, so it's not like we're making them do an extra step. We just think it's worth doing it early enough to get the opinion whenever possible. And if they, if they don't, you can say, we warned you that, you know, maybe they didn't ask for a variance, and they needed a variance, and what if we didn't have enough reaction time? They may have to publish in the newspaper again.
Mm-hmm.
So, and re-notify abutters. So we just want to be able to, you know, use that as convincing material.
So interestingly enough, as you know, Jeff, I just went through this process in the Hampshire. And up there, you file for a building permit, and the town was a small town, so the land use director looks it all over and says, okay, this is the variance, or they call it a special exception, that you'd be applying for. They send you a letter of denial for the permit, and once you get the letter of denial, you can go and apply for either the special exemption or the variance. So it's very straightforward, cut and dry, and then, and I think the nice thing about that is, which you would be involved in, is nobody's guessing at what, what part of the bylaw your, the infraction is on. It's coming right from the town saying, okay, this portion of the bylaw is where you should be focusing on. And I think that's probably pretty important for the, for the average homeowner that comes in here to get stuff done. For the attorneys, they know what they're doing. It's not a big deal, but, you know, we do get a fair amount of homeowners which come in, which is fine, you know, and I know you guys help them out all you can, so I think that's, I think this is something that should be looked at real seriously, and as you said, have town council see what we have to do to make it part of the, part of the process.
Okay. We just want to make sure, we want to be upfront, we're making a change to your application forms. We want to make you aware and see if you're in agreement, because if you're not...
Yeah. No, I mean, I am. The rest of the board, you can weigh in.
Good idea.
Okay, so this we can kind of start doing almost right away, and then we'll talk to council about other possible changes.
Yep.
And we'll bring that back to the board, too.
Okay. So this is just a recommendation at this point, not a requirement?
Correct.
Okay.
We would come back to you and bring you in the loop as to before, if we were to try to take that step, if we thought it made sense, so.
Even like Mark tonight surprised me. Some of the plans weren't that complete, you know, as far as some dimensions and so forth. The retaining wall, that's a big thing, not have it, the deck next to the property line. That's your closest point. Why aren't you referencing it? You know, I mean, it's almost like they're doing add-ons, that's how they get the plans done.
Did I not understand that, though, Jeff? They didn't need a variance on that side? We were going to allow that for the special...
So...
It was already nonconform.
On that side, the dwelling was already too close to the lot line. In that case, the bylaw allows to intensify an existing nonconformity with benefit of a special permit. On the other side, well, depending on the application, it met the setbacks, but the proposed dwelling would violate the setbacks. In that case, the need of variance, which is a much higher...
Has that changed?
Nope, that's...
I mean, it used to always provide a variance in those situations, like... That second one was actually more detrimental to the neighborhood than the first.
Well, I don't think we should be discussing with that.
I just, I just think that the, the fact that it's a nonconforming structure, a nonconforming lot, is where the special permit is coming into play more so than the variance criteria.
Does the general laws give specific, not leniency, but flexibility for you folks to decide case-by-case basis if it won't be substantially more detrimental? Where it's already nonconforming, you have a lot of discretion in those instances to authorize jockeying around, changing, even intensifying, but for something new, it's got to be variance relief.
Okay. And then the next issue, Jeff, you have something in here about the accessory dwelling units.
Yes. Mr. Chair, unfortunately, due to various time constraints, we weren't able to move the ball forward on this one, so we had hoped to have some additional information for you. We didn't get it in time, so we'll keep that as a placeholder for the next agenda with your permission. We're going to try to provide some examples for you to start to look at, see what elements of it you like, and then we could kind of maybe work with town council and bring back some more formal language for the board to think about.
This is where we're looking at that percentage to try to change that.
Yeah, we hate percentages.
15 percent.
And the newspaper article is something that I read and sent to Jeff and Sierra and said, you know, it's being looked at at the state level, too, so I think it's time for us to start moving forward with this. And, you know, as I said, my goal was to get it done this year. Doesn't have to be done this month, but sometime through the next, this calendar year for us, you know, we'd like to get something ready. So is there anything else? How about a motion to adjourn? Talk about it. All those in favor?
Aha.